I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, November 14th at 7:18 PM. The first agenda item will be discussion with North Brown LLC concerning North Village.
Do we make these seats?
Yeah.
I think that's fine. Just put the stuff in the center. Thank you.
Come on up, Neil.
No. No, I'll sit back here. I'll sit below.
Who is the other party that's at the meeting? I don't know if I know that.
Neil Reibicki. He's the site superintendent.
I am Ed Typhley. I represent North Brown LLC. We're here for our monthly update and to discuss some matters that were outlined in a letter to the board, which I think you have. Basically, the primary focus of it is to get the ZBA to approve the amendment to the amended MOU that we entered into with the Board of Selectmen earlier in the month, subject to this board's approval. And I think we discussed the MOU last time we were here. And I think if you review the one that was signed by the Board of Selectmen, you'll see that it basically addresses most of the issues that we -- I think it addresses all of the issues that we discussed.
The amendment? That's what you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah. Do you want me to go through it?
Yes.
And just highlight the stuff? Okay. When we were talking about it last week, the first issue was the 4B on page two of it. And we had added the language that we had discussed, that additional, the engineer, the town, the engineer consultant may impose additional requirements on the installation of the cistern is maybe reasonable based on any additional details and the final plans on unforeseen slider installation issues encountered. And I think that was consistent with what we talked about. The next paragraph C on the next page, we put in the May 1 date, and I think we had talked about that. And then we had talked about the having four buildings being able to get building permits for four buildings in Phase 2 after this is signed and approved by everyone. And it just details those, the unit numbers on that. And I think in one of Bill's handouts, he's --
Thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-five.
Right. Right. Those are street numbers.
Those are street address numbers.
Those are street numbers. I have unit numbers.
Okay.
Correct. They're the same units.
I'll cross-reference them on the spreadsheet.
Those aren't on the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is just dealing with the Phase 1 that I've prepared.
Okay.
Because we haven't gotten that.
But you're looking for something to happen to these, right?
Once the MOU is approved.
Okay.
But the spreadsheet deals with what we're dealing with now. So at some point...
As long as when you ask for something to be done here, we have a spreadsheet that matches it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. And paragraph E of that just says the language that we had talked about. The second sentence that we had discussed, that was one of the issues that we had talked about. F is the, deals with the hose that we're going to supply to the fire department. We had talked about, the fire department had estimated the cost of that to be about $55,000. And there was a lot of discussion about, well, what if the price goes up? And, you know, once again. So the way we dealt with it was that we would pay that, or we would provide those, we met with the fire chief after we met here. And he would prefer that, rather than he buying it, that we buy it. So we agreed to provide them to the fire department after, prior to any building permits beyond these eight here. Because his existing hose will be fine for 800 feet.
The reach, yeah.
So it's not an issue until that. And then we attached the specifications for the, that he had provided as an attachment to the MOU. And then the final thing is in paragraph three, the partial as-built plans. We had talked about the as-built plans, and it was agreed that what Bill wanted to see and what we provide would be the, would be as-built for the water and sewer infrastructure. So that's what that is. So that's basically the MOU. Any questions about it?
Wasn't the number of affordables to be sold, wasn't that part of the original MOU?
No, the affordables was in the comp. That was in the comp.
Question on the as-built.
Is there anything about the buildings in here where they increase in the size? We had asked at one of the meetings.
Yeah.
How was that addressed?
We did get a, not a detailed analysis, but we did get input from the engineer on the effect of stormwater flow from the increase in size. I think we had requested kind of like a building footprint plan showing...
They also sent that over. It showed the perimeter.
That's right. There was no topography, and I had asked Eric to provide topography on that plan.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
But it did show the offset.
That's correct.
It showed the footprint and showed the offset.
That's correct.
Jay had, actually the one that said it, about the setbacks, how it impacted the setbacks.
Yeah, so it showed.
So it showed the setbacks.
Right.
So you received that.
I received the plan with no topography, and, you know, so I just want to make sure it makes sense.
So are we, are there any more questions on the MOU?
Your expectation of our committee is to, our zoning board is to approve that amendment?
Approve it, yeah.
So we need to add a motion. The Board of Selectmen is like that?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's all there.
I'm asking Bill.
So approve everything that's in this?
No. No, no, no. Only the, only the MOU is, the Board of Selectmen signed the amended MOU because they're the ones that we did it with originally, so we had to get them to agree to it first. But because the MOU was attached to the comp permit, you need to approve it as an attachment to the comp permit. So, and that's only the first part of what's in my letter. And I can address the second part in an hour.
The only comment I have is on this issue with the as-built. We have a condition in the existing comp permit, under number seven, that contains the language, "As-built plans of each phase's grading stamped by a registered engineer shall be provided for the board's engineers' review for approval prior to commencement of the next phase." So I guess I have a couple of questions. I want to make sure we're being consistent with what's being proposed on the MOU with number three and what's in the document itself. And that's number one. Number two, what are we considering commencement of the next phase? Is it building permit issuance? Is it infrastructure construction? I need some direction on that. I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to have it be building permit issuance, just so we have a definitive time. You know, there's obviously going to be site clearing and stuff that goes on in advance of that.
Elaboratory, kind of.
So...
I'm sorry. What?
Number seven in the actual comp permit.
Seven of what section?
I did a search of phase, phasing, just because I was checking on, for consistency and continuity on the phasing issue.
Here is the phasing plan, the area of the place, the grading stamped by a registered engineer.
It's the last sentence.
Yeah, I got it.
I just want to make sure we're not being contradictory and everybody's on the same page. I don't mind having language that's contradictory as long as everyone agrees here formally what it means.
I would say personally, probably building permits.
I'd go along with that. What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. You're already having a third-party inspection of the infrastructure that's going in anyways, correct? If it's permit-related, at least it allows that work to continue.
I would agree with it. Commencing of that phase would be...
Commencement is a building, is it, is it issued a building?
Now, keep in mind that we've already agreed upon four units in that second phase, so you may want to have some language in there about unit number five. I don't know how, or unit number one. How's that going to work?
Well, they've not applied for building permits, and building permits haven't been issued yet. So, I mean, that date is still, you know, a good date.
Coming.
So it doesn't affect that?
No.
Because you already...
No. I mean, theoretically, they could provide it tomorrow. We're good to go.
Okay. Should we take a, should we, a motion and vote on that?
I want to make sure they're good with the...
That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is understanding.
Yeah. I don't think there's a need for a vote. I think as long as everybody agrees. It's a building permit for the commencement.
Okay.
But we still need a vote on the amendment?
Yeah, on the MOU, yeah. Anyone have any difficulties or questions on it? If not, I'll make a motion that the zoning board approve the amendment to the amended amendment or the amended memorandum of understanding dated October 23.
Motion by Mrs. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
So the second part of my letter relates to the occupancies and the building permits and all of that. And the chart that Pam had requested regarding the status of everything is attached to it. But since I submitted that, we sold one more unit, so I just updated the chart to reflect the new sale. And I had sent that over as well.
Was that attached to the email?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the email I distributed just now.
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing. That email, oh, just so we touch on it, that email also included a copy of the playground deed.
Correct.
We completed the playground, and we deeded it to the town.
So it's recorded in...
And the town accepted it, and it's recorded. So, in terms of the...
Is there signage out there? I didn't even notice. Is there?
There is some signage in the playground, yeah.
That it's available for all, the entire town? Because I noticed, I think there was some confusion on the Internet.
What we did was, it is open to the entire, it is open to the entire town. What we did was, we asked the REC committee to kind of stipulate what they wanted specifically for signage and gating and, you know, access. And so they controlled that, really.
Mm-hmm. I haven't worked, so...
But yes, to answer your question, it's the whole town.
So in terms of the building permits and the occupancy permit situation, the chart basically shows when, it's a breakdown of the units and the street numbers, shows which units are affordable, has the date that the purchase-to-sale agreement for any units that are under agreement were entered into, has an estimated closing date, and for those that are sold, has the sold date, has the date that the building permit was issued, and the date that the CO was issued. Okay?
Yeah, I'm a little confused with a couple of them.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
Your affordables at 22 and 24.
Twenty-two, is it a street number or a unit number?
A unit number, quite down the street there from the road.
Twenty-two, oh.
Appear to have been issued on 10/17. 10/17/17.
The street number, 22 and 24, not unit number.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Is that what I'm looking at? Are these, is this...
Yes. Yep.
That's what I'm...
I think that, yeah, I think that, I don't believe that's a...
And then the ones near the beginning, which is six and eight, are affordable. Those supposedly were just issued this past September.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they've been built for a long time. So I don't understand.
Which ones?
Six and eight, right?
No. I'll build them.
Didn't you have a bunch all done there in a row? I mean, I've been in there and driven around, so it just doesn't compute to me. First of all, why you'd have two at the very beginning, just the issued permits on one way down the street, when the holes weren't even digged, Doug, I didn't think, done last year ago?
Well, the permit was issued a year ago.
Building permit was issued. Okay. It's not making sense to me. That doesn't matter. Okay.
Building permit was issued this year, right? September of this year?
On six and...
Six and eight.
Right.
Is that the beginning of the development?
That's at the beginning. Well, it's...
When the...
On the left-hand side, yeah.
Yeah, this is the street where you come that way. That's the boulevard.
signed last spring. Actually, all of them were signed last spring. The latest one was in July, but that was an offer that we had received about a month earlier. So essentially, we had a, we had a good spring in terms of marketing and put a lot under agreement. The lottery on the affordables was in May of this year. And while we got two potential buyers out of that lottery, but only one of them ended up being able to qualify, so that was the one that, that was the one that we sold. And then shortly after that, then we had to deal with this issue of the booster pump and the cistern, and then we've essentially dealt with that. So, you know, we've been coming in every month requesting occupancy permits, and basically, you know, that, it wasn't as if they were for deals that had just been struck. Those were occupancy permits for deals that had been made back to the beginning of the So that's what we've been working on in terms of getting the occupancy permits and then conveying the units. And as you'll see, we still, and we've been, so in terms of entering into new contracts, we basically haven't because we were really uncertain as to what was going to happen until the booster issue and the cistern issue was resolved. We were taking the risk in terms of building units because we need to have inventory, but we really, you know, we can't promise somebody a unit and then not be able to deliver it. So, but we do have three units, as you'll see from the, from the last column, that we had entered into agreements for and we need to deliver. And we have, we have some good news in terms of the affordables. We have two buyers that have been submitted to DHCD for approval in terms of qualifying. And there are another three that look like they will be able to qualify. So...
So you've, you've got five people you can underperform?
Well, I don't want to say five. We have two, but we're hoping to have five.
Potentially.
Potentially five, yeah. Yep.
That's good.
And all of the affordables are under construction in Phase 1, so we will be able to deliver them, but probably not until, well, the end of the year would be optimistic, I think. But hopefully shortly thereafter. And, you know, it will take, once they get submitted to DHCD, it's going to take them a little while for...
What's the turnaround time?
Well, for, as you'll see from Rosenthal, the one that we did sell, it sold fairly quickly after we, it was about a month from when we signed the PNS. So, but you can't sign the PNS until they qualify from DHCD.
That's my next question.
So if DHCD, and DHCD, I've been told by SCB, our lottery people, that they can turn it around in about two weeks. So if they turn it around in two weeks in the first week of December, you know, we should be able to sell in January, I would hope.
So they don't sign a PNS until they're approved by...
Until they're approved by DHCD, right.
I think they do want contingent upon getting approved by them, but whatever.
They don't want to tie it up, DHCD. They want to have a buyer that's able to pull it off.
Right, yeah.
So that's where we are. But in the meantime...
I've seen all your affidavits.
Thank you.
Plastered it everywhere.
We did.
Good.
We did.
Mike gave me some good pointers.
Good.
Oh, they won't.
So, but we do have three deals that we had signed and that the units are ready to, or will be ready to be conveyed by the, by the estimated closing date. So what we, what we're proposing is an amendment to the comp permit that ties it to occupancy permits and not sales. Currently, you have to sell four of every 16, okay? And I had asked our lottery agent about it, the affordable people, and they said they'd never seen a comp permit that specified sales rather than occupancy permits. It says generally they're occupancy permits. But regardless, ours says sales, occupancy permits is another way to go. And so if we can tie them to occupancy permits rather than sales, and at least for the first tranche of permits, it says 16 out of, you know, four out of 16. If we can go to five out of 20, that will enable us to complete these sales, okay? And then, and no more than these, until we get the occupancy permits on, rather than three units, on four, four additional units. And again, hopefully by that time, we will, shortly thereafter, we will be selling at least a couple of them. Because to build them and get the occupancy, I mean, basically, you had to build it to get the occupancy permit completed. And that's a significant...
Yeah, but again, to sell them means that we're contributing to having, we're helping our position with the state.
Right.
Under the 40B.
I understand.
But the occupancy also does that. It adds to the affordable stock at occupancy.
We asked town council to come tonight. He was on it. He did address that in the email this afternoon.
Okay.
Of which he...
Do you have a copy? Or do I have that or no?
No, I think...
Okay, that's...
No, this was late this afternoon.
This was early this afternoon. Because we had hoped that he'd make it tonight, and he didn't. But he, the question to him was, Tim Biello mentioned at a previous meeting that if they were unable to sell the affordable units, then CEOs would count towards the meeting condition number 34. His response is...
And condition number 34 is four of 16 units.
Four of 16, yeah.
That ratio.
His response is, I would not agree to that.
Right.
At the very least, they would have to show that they have been aggressively marketing and simply cannot find a buyer. I do not have a lot of sympathy for their position, and my use of the word "sold" was purposeful.
Well, that's, that's why we're asking for the amendment to the comp permit. I agree that the comp permit says "sold," okay? And "sold" is "sold."
Right.
But...
Well, he's saying that the units that even have occupancy permits do not meet the criteria.
Doesn't meet the criteria of the comp permit now.
Correct.
Because the comp permit says "sold."
Right.
And that's why we proposed the amendment.
Not the criteria of the state, but of the comp permit itself. So it's not meeting the language of the comp permit. And he's right.
I agree. You know, I agree. But I don't know if, I didn't get a copy of it.
It just came in...
Well, I think the town wanted to place itself in a, in a good position. And we used our attorney to come up with the agreed-upon comp permit.
Well, I do understand. However, when the permit was issued nine years ago, I mean, it was nine years ago.
Yep.
And because of the circumstances here, and the circumstances being the booster pump, the cistern, issue that we've been dealing with for the past six months. I mean, it's really been...
I don't think that's been that long, has it?
Oh, absolutely.
One finish. What does that cause?
It's, it's prevented us, well, number one, we marked, we began marketing the project, okay? And selling units. And then had the lottery scheduled after that. Once the lottery got, once we marketed the units, got a number of units under agreement, had the lottery, didn't get the number of units in the lottery that we had expected. And then we're in the situation of having to come in and get occupancy permits on a case-by-case basis and building permits on a case-by-case basis. It kind of, it basically slowed our project up. So that we haven't been able to get the sales.
Most of that has happened, in my mind anyways, is because you exceeded what the original agreement was, and then it finally, we finally caught up to what it was.
Oh, yes.
There was six, there was six at the beginning?
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm just... Okay.
And that's what happened. So, if you don't mind.
No, go right in.
All right. I'm sitting there listening to all this. The, what you're asking for is three more occupancies at this time, right?
We're asking for three more occupancy for market rate units.
And you want to change this to five out of 20?
In order to do that, we need to amend the comp permit and say five out of 20.
No, I'm with you on all that. So you want to change that to five out of 20?
Just, just for this phase.
No, no, but just for this phase.
I mean, we're happy to go back to the original.
For Phase 1, you want five out of 20?
Right.
Yes, okay. And you're asking for three more right now? Yes.
Yes. Yes, 'cause we need...
You realize that what you're asking for is you don't even bother coming back in next month because until you sell the other four affordables, because you're at twelve units now, five out of twenty is fifteen.
Right.
These three put you at that level and you're done.
Right, we're done.
You're done.
We're done.
You won't get any more until you sell four affordables.
Well, no, we're asking for occupancy permits and not "sold." We're asking that the permit be amended to provide not for sold units, but for units that have occupancies. And again, we think the rationale for that is, once we, once we get an occupancy permit on a unit, there's every incentive for us to sell it because we've got over $200,000 invested in the unit. More than, it's more than we can sell it for, and it's tying up our capital. So, we wanna sell the affordables as quickly as we can. I mean, we're not, we don't wanna hold affordable for occupancy for this.
I just posed the question, and that's how I'm understanding it. So, after you get these three, you gotta still sell four to meet that, but you're, you wanna change it to occupancies instead of sold units so then you can just have an inventory of all these affordable units.
Well, that, yes, yes. But if you want, well, if, yes.
I've already shown that, I've tried to work with you.
That's our preference.
I need to fully understand what you're doing because I feel like that it's a little circle that we're running around chasing each other.
We don't, we don't want it either.
No, it's not at all.
But I specifically asked, last month you came in, you asked for those final two permits. I asked Larry if, what was, what was the deal with those other two foundations? I'm pretty sure that he understood what I meant, but the answer I got is that that was all set. I didn't realize that those two permits you were asking for were for those two foundations that you put in without the permits.
No, we had foundation permits.
No, 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 no.
Prior to those two units?
Yes, we had foundation permits from Larry for all the foundations that went in.
Even the ones that went in? The last two, he's not here.
Did, no, didn't he double your application fee?
There was two foundations...
Oh, no, I'm wrong, I'm wrong on that, he just said I was wrong.
Yeah.
What happened with that was the hole was open, the footings were in. We anticipated a foundation permit coming, and it didn't come. And the walls had gotten bored. But nothing went past where Larry could inspect it.
He doesn't do a hole inspection?
Yeah, he inspected the hole.
He inspected a hole without a permit?
Yeah.
The hole was still opened up, so he could inspect everything he wanted to. Even with the walls in. So, everything he wanted to see was open for him to see.
But he inspected the hole before the permit, before the footing was bored?
No, he said the hole was left open so he could inspect it.
Well, that's the case with every cell hole, I mean, they're all open.
Yeah, to do that before, yeah.
But...
I feel it anyways, but anyways, that's up to Larry, I guess.
So, really, Ed, what you're looking for is, you're looking for language, you're looking for numbers and language. You're looking to increase numbers on the comp permit to five out of twenty, right?
Yes.
And then you're also looking for... My brain just went...
To go from "sold" to occupancy.
Occupancy, right.
That just in Phase One or is that the whole thing?
We would prefer...
I know what you prefer, I'm just asking you to...
No, we would like it for the whole thing. Because it really, to have sold units is, and to keep that ratio with what you're selling is tough.
Yeah, the timing gets difficult.
So, I guess it begs the question, what happens if you don't sell?
They sit.
They sit and complete?
They say completed units.
Indefinitely?
It happens, and I know this is all guessing, but in my experience, we've done three affordable projects. They come in phases. We'll go six months without selling an affordable, and then we'll hit four or five at a time. And it's never that perfect ratio where you build three, sell one, build three, sell one. It's just never there. And in every other town I've worked in, it's always been tied to occupancies.
And it's, you know, and to start a project is difficult. I mean, the incentive is to generate cash so you can keep the project going. So, you know, you're selling the market rate units as quickly as you can. And in this case, you know, we got caught short because of this issue in terms of being able to...
I think a lot of issues, don't you? I think some of the issues are self-imposed.
Some are self-imposed and some are, has to do with just how construction works. You run into problems and you try to overcome them.
We couldn't have foreseen the booster pump, cistern issue. I mean, we didn't know until the water and sewer commissioners told us in the spring that they didn't want the booster pump, that we couldn't put the booster pump there.
I don't think, I don't think the booster pump, cistern issue would have prevented any construction because that's gonna move it along. And I don't think, I don't see where that had, that would have interfered with any advertisement and any aggressive practices on the affordable units. Yes, as of late, you have done that, okay? My problem with this whole thing is you, I wasn't here nine years ago on this board, but you entered into an agreement nine years ago. It was fine then. We have correspondents from the town attorney that say he put it in there purposely.
Purposely, yeah.
Yeah, whatever you're, you know what I meant.
I do.
He put that in there, and now you're asking us to just change that. And he sent that today, it wasn't from nine years ago. So, there's a reason that he wants it there. And I don't know what that reason is.
Well, I mean, if the affordable sales don't move in the second phase, then we're gonna have...
Backup.
And the affordable portion of the whole development was what was attractive to the town.
That's right.
And we are moving that way. I mean, in good faith, we have started construction on all seven affordables. It's not like we're starting construction on the affordables as an afterthought. They're starting right in line with the market rate, and they're even ahead of the market rate. Seven affordables is ahead in this phase, one unit. And, yeah, there's seven affordables in Phase One. There's twenty-six units in total and nineteen market rates. So, that puts one affordable ahead in the ratio of Phase One. So, you're one affordable ahead. It's not like we're not trying to meet the guidelines. And in my experience in the past, and that's all I can go on, is the affordables, we sell fifty percent of them at the lottery, where in this case, we only were able to generate one. And the other fifty percent have always come through MLS on a first-come, first-served basis, and they usually get eaten up pretty quick. Because we are in more, the towns we were in, yeah, it were a better market. And the affordables, the ratio of the sales price was a lot lower, so they get gobbled up fast. But since then, we've taken your advice, we've marketed aggressively. And I put it in thirty local publications. And we've dropped flyers off in a couple dozen places, and it has helped. Since then, that has generated one of the prospective new buyers, and I'm grateful for that. And thank you.
We're in a lousy timeframe here, you know what I mean?
Yeah, understood.
Get into this, no, and holidays and all that stuff, so...
But we have picked up, it looks like, five potential affordable sales.
And that's good, but that's after our board saying, you know, we haven't seen that advertised at all, guys.
And I appreciate, and I thank you for that.
At what stage of the construction are the affordables?
The affordables, we got two that'll be ready for occupancy in one to two weeks. And we have, the third one will be ready in three weeks. So, we will have four ready for occupancy within a month.
And you have one already occupied, right?
We have one occupied.
So, if the sales, you know, happen, if these buyers can all qualify and we can sell them, we can sell them. And we can do them, you know, in the January, February timeframe. Again, the problem is contracts that require performance on market rates before then. And it's, you know, it's obviously, it's a problem for us. It's also unfortunately a problem for the buyers. So, we're asking for relief. And if you're not comfortable with what's been proposed, then whatever else the board would be willing to do in order that we can complete those sales.
It's just a question of why would you enter into purchase and sale agreements on the market rate ones, knowing that you haven't met the...
We hadn't, when we signed, we hadn't even had the lottery done when we signed those deals. We've been marketing, we've been marketing the project.
Yep, I see, those sales are made in the summer.
So, these are, these are the closing, the PNS and the closing dates are over six months later, right?
Yep.
Looks like.
Yeah.
So, 'cause the building, they weren't done, right?
It takes us about six months to build the unit.
Now, you, you wait until you sell them before you build them? I don't understand the process, or your process.
Some we are building ahead and some were being built as the PNS were generated. So, you put some specs up, and if you get a PNS, the bank will release more funds and you can build more units.
You've got lots of deadlines, don't you? Do you have a couple of spreadsheets yourselves?
You don't have any other PNS signs right now? Is it the only three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, we didn't know what was gonna happen with the project.
I'm just asking, I'm anticipating your monthly, your monthly visit as to what you're gonna surprise me with next. That's why I'm asking you.
No.
Stay tuned, and if I sound like a smartass, then oh, well.
No, I don't like entering into agreements that I don't know I can perform.
No, well, I said, it was either last meeting or the weekend before. I said, I don't, I'm not comfortable to be put into a position where I'm affecting people's lives by, because you're coming in saying, "Well, I have these PNS and we gotta have these closings."
Exactly, well, that's why we haven't done it. That's why we haven't done it until we get...
But this would've been a lot more helpful a couple, three meetings ago, so we could, we could be making these decisions. And you wouldn't, and actually, it would've been to your benefit. You wouldn't have been struggling like you are now trying to make this.
Well, I did tell you in July that I, what I needed to get through October.
We're here now, and I'd like to make a better relationship. I'm trying to make amends. I don't wanna keep having this back and forth either. It's not fun for me sitting on this side, not knowing how my livelihood is gonna be affected. So, we're trying now to make amends and make it better. And that's all I wanna do, is move forward and hopefully provide you with...
So, you've presented us with some things that you'd like. We've got a tracking list here of ongoing issues that I guess aren't being closed.
Yeah, today I asked Neil to give me a list, and he did respond with an email. It's in my pile somewhere.
Hotels here, huh?
There we go. I've got his responses to each of these. I just wanna make sure that we're not losing sight of these, which is why I asked Leonard to start tracking them. The last one. So, I haven't had a chance to compare it, so, you know, I'm sure we'll have some back and forth before your next meeting.
This, this board keeps, getting requests from you to keep your project going, whatever. And I keep seeing these things, these lists of things that aren't done. And I know you've got people now that are up there on a daily basis. And I just wonder how it can be brought up to a standard that I guess is normal.
I would think our project is normal. And that these conditions are things that happen during construction and while the project is being completed. And they will all be rectified as we go through. And to me, these are minor issues.
They're not safety issues?
They're not safety issues, no. Like paving of roadway cracked at the edges. That happens on the binder coat. That's why we don't do the top coat till the whole phase is completed. And once we go to top coat, the, Leonard Engineering will come out. They'll mark, well, they'll mark all the areas they want us to fix. We'll cut them out, they'll get fixed, they'll get inspected, and then the top coat will be put in.
I guess recently I've been reading, I read something about silt and drainage. And, I mean, I had a concern about your stormwater areas. Is there silt that's infiltrated some of those and caused drainage problems?
The, do, I brought a, we are a low-impact design.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
So, I don't know if everyone quite understands what a low-impact design is. It is. Because a low-impact design is relatively new design.
And there hasn't been many built there.
So, the stormwater cells that are between the units, they take all the water from the roadway that would, and the roof runoff that would normally be gone, would go into your typical pipe and catch basin system. So, it's to put the water back in the area that was normally involved and infiltrate and recharge groundwater.
And how long should the water be standing in those?
Water, if you, in a typical rain event, which we haven't had, we all know it's been extremely wet for the past sixty days. But if you get it, we've been monitoring the stormwater cells, and they're infiltrating at about an inch a day. And even though the pictures look like there's two feet of water in them, there's only four to six inches of water in the stormwater cells. But the problem is we're getting an inch of rain every other day, so the recharging, the water is going in at the same rate that they're infiltrating.
So, in that, in that scenario, since we, these things have water in them now, right? Now, we just drop into the teens at night. That freezes what happens. I'm just curious, I'm just wondering what's gonna happen because now we can't soak into it. So, is this overflow into the neighboring yards, where does it go?
No, 'cause if waters, if it's raining the next day, the ice that has melted, frozen on top of it will also melt. They're still, and they're still infiltrating. It's not, you're not gonna get six inches of ice overnight. They are still infiltrating into the ground. And from what we're being told, they are working correctly. They're not finished yet. They still have plantings and different things that go inside the basin. So, if you look on your last sheet, yeah, it'll show you how it'll look when they're finished. And the plantings can't be done until the phase is completely finished and all the area around it is stabilized to make sure there isn't silt. And we will check that this spring, once they're dry, before we do the planting, to make sure that they're not silted out. And if we have to put new bottoms, then we will. But right now, we have been monitoring all the cells, and they all are infiltrating at about an inch per day in a twenty-four-hour period.
I've stopped there, up there a few times, and a couple days after rain, it's quite a bit of water.
Well, yeah, 'cause if you get, if you get two inches of rain, so you're gonna get two inches of rain in the cell itself, plus you're taking all the road runoff and the roof runoff. So, a two-inch rain event will give you four inches of water in the cell, which will then take four days to infiltrate.
So, you're talking it's supposed to infiltrate straight down, not drain off at all?
Exactly, it goes straight back down and recharges groundwater. And it's all explained in the overview that I handed you. But that's what it's really for, it's a green development.
And have you worked on this type of project before?
Yes.
Or is this your, no?
No, yeah, I had said that before that he's done it.
Could you tell me where, so we could go look at it?
Yeah, Harvard.
Harvard.
Anything further away? North Andover.
I heard Drake. But we, it's, the project is working the way it is designed. And once it's finished, I think you'll appreciate the product 'cause it is much better than your typical... I think you'll appreciate the product because it is much better than your typical pipe and basin subdivision. It's supposed to be a very green and friendly way to manage your stormwater.
When do you anticipate phase one being done?
A hundred percent complete.
Well, enough so that you can plant your gardens.
I would think late spring.
Perfect timing, God.
Yeah. Well, you need good stabilization of all the material around the basins themselves so you're not, once you put the plants in, you can't go in and scratch out the bottom without taking the plants out.
Oh, I would imagine.
So, you wanna get all the area around them stabilized.
Look, you know, what kind of council stands on this?
I'm not, I'm not inclined to go in that direction. So, they do need some, some assistance with this, though.
If you'll give us a waiver for the three units, we can revisit it in January.
The thing is, we've, we've been waving things left and right for you and not even getting good communication in return.
Well, I don't think that's true, Dan.
It's getting better.
Thank you. That's, and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, no, but I'll, I'll give you that much. It's getting better.
We're trying to make it better. We're trying to give you what you need. We're trying to get to the point we want, still.
The, these two slash five potential people, when would you have more feedback on that, their situation?
Probably by your December meeting.
Really?
By your December meeting.
Oh, you would?
I...
Yeah, no, you anticipate that?
Yeah. Well, we have two sales before.
Right?
I get that.
So, I would, I would be inclined to assist them with the two sales and then, and get more feedback. Obviously, my statements or comments about the advertisement was, was well-heard and they put the effort in and got the results that we're hoping for to get some more interest at parties. Unfortunately, you're around Christmas time and the real estate market is probably the softest it's gonna be during the course of the year. That's just my personal feeling. That's one of the reasons why I asked, Ed, do we have any more hidden PNSs that we're gonna have to deal with, or is this the actual list? I would strongly suggest that you don't enter into any other ones until you have a better feeling as to where you're going. I, I wouldn't have projected closing dates when you don't even know if you're gonna get an occupancy, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw in my face that you, you have people that we're holding up, can't move in, you saying that affecting its livelihood. I don't even wanna go there. That's, really, you shouldn't even be part of our consideration in, in doing this whole thing. That's, that's just emotion that's put into the decision and it shouldn't be there. That, that's how I see it.
I'm really struggling with, 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 I'm definitely not in favor of this. We'll get an occupancy permit, but then it'll count as sold. Not that I'm, I can say, going record. I'm not in favor of that at all.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of that because we have a town council that, that drafted this thing originally.
And it was agreed to.
They, they were, they were, they were agreed to it and they tried to change it now and is, and you already said that you have a, a past track record doing these, so why you would enter into an agreement that you didn't like, I don't understand.
If, I mean, if it was reversed and we said, oh, we know the agreement says you gotta sell four out of 16, and we said, no, we're gonna change that to five out of 16, you wouldn't appreciate that, and I'm really not appreciating you wanting us to...
But that's how the comprehensive permit works. And we enter into it with the town with the best intentions, and we're trying to provide that. But we do have unanticipated problems that we run into, and you come in and you ask the zoning board for relief, and that's what we're doing.
Yep.
You know, it's not that we didn't enter in and we don't wanna uphold our end of the bargain. We do. But at, there are times when you need relief with these projects, and that's what you come into the zoning board and ask for, and we do it all the time in every town we work in, because you don't understand or know what the next hurdle's gonna be sometimes.
Well, you've asked for relief several months in a row and got it every month.
And, and I appreciate every time you've done it. But we're all trying to get to the same point, which is build a great project, have something proud we can show for the town, and to get it finished.
Speaking of that, what's your timeline's looking like getting it done? When do you anticipate finishing phase two? How long is that gonna take?
It looks like it's about a year of phase is what it's been taking us.
Okay.
So, if it holds true, it would be another three years.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's hard to say if things...
Another, another three years?
Yeah, there's three, three more phases.
Oh, okay, there's four phases.
So, it, but it's hard to say if things are tied to sold units. You know, I, and again, in other towns, it's always tied to occupancies and it's a little more...
Well, don't tell us we're different.
I'm not telling you you're different. I'm saying that the permit itself was written different.
But it was agreed to.
You are unique.
Unique?
Maybe it was written different, but it was agreed to.
I understand, Dan, and I wanna uphold that, I do. But unfortunately, we tried and I can't meet that. So, what am I supposed to do? I gotta come in and ask for relief, and that's what I'm doing.
Continue with the aggression on the marketing.
Yep.
And it's fair to, it's fair to say that, no, I know you are. Well, I'm assuming you are. But it's fair to say that the aggression is, is starting to pay off, aren't you? So, moving forward.
Stay on top of it.
I would think that an aggressive approach to that, if it's the hottest thing to sell, it's what you put your most effort into. Moving forward, that, that should help you tremendously. Because up until, within the last 60 days, I don't even know when you started your marketing, probably 30 days ago.
Well, no, that's not true and it's...
Aggressively with the affordable.
With the, well, no, with, with outside marketing, outside the MLS and outside of the lottery. In my past experience, it's been the lottery, sold 50% of the units, and then MLS, as soon as you put them out, first come, first served, they get gobbled up.
Yeah.
I wasn't really expecting that the affordability...
Different locations.
Wouldn't take off here like they did in other towns. There are, sometimes it...
It's a learning experience, isn't it?
Thank you, yes.
It is for us to, we'll muddle through together.
Should we continue and discuss it next month, see where you, where they stay next month?
Well, the, the problem that they're faced with right now is those two units that they're under agreement with.
Looks like they've got a closing next week, or this one.
That's why I has stated that I would be inclined to go along with those two units and then Ed said that he would, feels confident that he would have more concrete information on these two slash five affordable buyers. That would keep, keep their project going. I know I've already done this twice and the board's going along with me on it. It's kind of a tough position to be in. If we don't, if we don't make any, any further advancement on this, you won't get this suggestion out of me again.
I think we, I think we had that statement last month, but they're back looking for more. I mean, it's...
We didn't have this list. We had no idea what was in front.
If this was to go south, we're gonna look out for something, you know?
Yeah, this would have saved us a lot of, lot of brain work.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it was a strategy, I feel, but anyways. Well, if you had come in and said this is what we got in front of us and we could have made an educated decision, you wouldn't be asking each one, no?
I, okay, you don't wanna hear it.
Well, you have a signed PNS, wouldn't estimate a closing date, and most PNSs have an estimated closing date on them.
But I, I told you in July, when the question was, what do you need, and I told you the number of occupancy permits I needed through October, and that was the number. And rather than grant them all in July, you said, well, we'll give you two and then we'll come back and give you three. And so, we got to the same number, but it, but it was, we, we presented the information in July. I didn't present...
It was in bits and pieces.
I didn't present the chart. I didn't present the chart.
You didn't get, you didn't get the five that you asked for in July?
No. No, you gave us two.
You gave us three and then you gave you two.
But that's what we needed to get to, the next 30 days, the 30 days, that's what we were talking about. That didn't project out this far.
But the number, our projections were, were the same.
Yeah, it didn't go out this far.
I, I don't wanna hold them up. I really, I think they need, if they, if they've got a...
You need two separate motions on the change in the agreement to the five out of 20, and then one to grant this other thing, the, whatever, whether it's one unit, two, two units, three units or whatever, or can it be combined? Well, they're asking for two different things. They're asking for...
A waiver on, on these.
Well, I guess they're asking for one, but if they don't, if they don't get the five out of 20...
I, I would suggest separating them. If there's, if there's a difference of opinion on the two requests, I would suggest just keep it clean, separate the two.
So, I guess it was asked that you, you had one thing that would have incorporated these, but now it's a possibility that it's gonna be separated.
Yes, I'm, I'm not clear on what the heck the difference is with five out of 20 and four out of, you know, I mean, four out of 16.
Gives us three more units.
It gives them, right now, they have market, market rate, they have 12 occupancies, they have one. Okay, so if they get five out of 20, these three, they're still compliant.
The next three have to be affordable in the order to meet four out of 16, but their request is to have the next three be market rate.
Right.
And then the next five will have to be four.
So, they...
But if you could only sell one in months, six months.
Why would you wanna do that?
One affordable, how are we gonna sell five before you, you'll be back looking for market rate ones again, and it just, it's just, the snowball keeps getting bigger and bigger, and I'm frustrated by it, honestly.
According to this, they don't have any other PNSs signed on these...
Right, but they're, but they're being built. Their market rate ones are being built. So, if they're having more success selling the market rate ones, they're gonna be back and say, well, we, we know we said five out of 20.
Yeah, but I guess they'll be...
We can't, we can't do it because we couldn't anticipate that, but we have three more families that wanna move into the, to the full rate ones.
Then I guess they're gonna generate a legal problem on their own that they can't provide something that they promised.
So, when do we decide that?
When do we decide it? I think that, that's gonna be decided tonight, if you make this decision. He has no, no other PNSs on here.
Right.
So, if, if he's granted these three, or two, or whatever, however it works out, he needs at least two to get to the next meeting. Okay? So, if he's granted those, he doesn't get any more market rate ones. Because, again, playing on the emotion end of things, that you're holding up families, he's trying to make a livelihood and all, all this other stuff that, that's put out there. But there are no other PNSs assigned.
Right.
So...
But that could, that could happen between now and the next meeting. Hopefully for them, they're, they'll make sales whether they're affordable or not, but they'll be...
But we, we haven't done it since the spring because we didn't want to put us or you in this position.
You haven't done what?
We haven't...
Haven't sold anything?
We haven't, we haven't signed any more purchases. The last purchase and sale agreement...
I mean, you've turned people away?
Yes.
You have.
We have...
I'm just amazed.
We have, we have...
That doesn't sound even possible, that you do that. Why would you do that?
Would you just take it with contingencies upon, contingent upon getting occupancy permits?
We have some reservations. We have reservations, but we don't have purchase and sale agreements.
They were all sold last month.
Yeah.
That's what you told me.
No, I did. I was wrong. I thought we had, I thought we, I thought we had...
I'll watch the tape again.
I thought we had two more sold.
So, is this fictitious or is this real?
No, that's real.
It's real.
It's real.
Well, I'm just going on the conversation.
No, it's absolutely real, please. Listen, I'm not, I, I don't wanna be insulted that I'm up here. I'm not.
No, neither do I.
And I'm not accusing you of that.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to help you out. I'd like to do, I'd like to give you a waiver for these two, the, the comprehensive thing. I don't, I'm not interested, really.
You know, we just keep getting back into the corner, saying, oh, we got, you're gonna screw up these families if you don't bend, and we just keep bending and bending and...
Again, all of these...
It's a two-way street, but it hasn't been, it should be a two-way street.
Dan, all of these contracts were entered into before we even started any of these discussions with this board. We're not keeping, bending you into, into corners. There's nothing that's changed since this first was discussed with this board in July. This, this is it. These are the contracts.
But you said you only had sales through October. If we got...
No, no, no. I said, that's the number of occupancy permits I needed through October. My expectation in July was this issue would be resolved by September. It hasn't been resolved. We're still waiting for the design for the sister.
I understand.
So, it, it hasn't changed. But what has changed is the fact that we can't go forward, and we haven't gone forward since last spring in terms of doing contracts for sales of units. We've built...
You said you wanted inventory at the last meeting.
We do. We wanna sell.
And now, now you're telling us that you're building them, but you don't wanna sell them because you weren't sure of...
No, we wanna sell them, Dan.
No, you said you've been turning away sales.
But if you're not gonna give us, if you're not gonna give us permits, what are we gonna do?
And you just said you were turning away sales. Tim said you were turning away sales because you didn't know what the, the future was.
We can't enter into purchase and sales agreements.
Would you sign, would you sign a purchase and sale agreement when you haven't gotten the permit yet?
Then why do you keep building them if you haven't got the...
Because we have to keep pushing forward. You're a builder. You know you have to keep building. I'm anticipating we're gonna resolve this and then we can sell more. I have to have product ready to sell. I can't just stop and then wait once we resolve it and then start up again. It'll take me six months to have something to be ready that I can sell.
But, but you're talking like that, and now, and then earlier this evening, you mentioned that you don't have any affordable units ready to go.
And what...
And if, if somebody were to buy one, it would take a month to get it finished.
No, in one to two weeks, we're gonna have two occupancies. We have two affordables that are ready, and then we have another one two weeks behind that.
Well, it sounds like you're putting your, your eggs into the, into the regular units and not, not building the affordables.
No, it's, it's pretty close to the same ratio, because they're in the same buildings, some of them.
Yeah, some of them.
No, that's not true. I have seven affordables under construction right now.
We have to build them to a point.
And you only have seven affordables up here.
Yeah, I have all...
But you also supposedly have somebody living in one.
I have all, I have all seven affordables under construction or, or sold. All seven affordables in phase one.
Okay, so you said under construction, but you supposedly have somebody living in one.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Pam, you're taking my, twisting my words.
Well, I am. I'm trying to figure out what's going on here.
I have six of...
All of the affordables in phase one are either sold or under construction.
Thank you. That's more articulate.
But the ratio is one is sold and six are under construction.
Yes, yes, thank you.
It's a good thing you advertised them.
What do we do from here?
I'm not sure if everybody's in agreement. Just three of us here. Could try a motion. Can we get a motion? We could all support Mr. Fitzy. Can we get a motion that we could all support Mr. Fitzy?
I make a motion to approve his, his-
Waiver.
amended, something or other. Is that the technical?
All right.
So, let's see.
We already approved the amended.
No, this is to the comprehensive permit, correct, on the five to-
Section four, number thirty-four. Modification to section four, number thirty-four. Correct. That's this one here in the front page.
I got it, I got it, I think I got it, is that it?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
That's going from four of sixteen to five of twenty, and then back to four of sixteen after that.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'm gonna just say it one more time, because we don't have anybody here.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the change to the comprehensive permit, was that section thirty-four?
Section four.
Section four.
Number thirty-four.
Number thirty-four.
As presented.
As presented, and I change it from the four of the sixteen being affordable, four units of the sixteen being affordable, to change it to five of the twenty being affordable.
And then back to four of sixteen.
And then back.
And then, oh, just-
That's for Phase One.
That's just for Phase One.
Then back to four out of sixteen, at the completion of Phase One.
How long that lasts. I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five of twenty, only in Phase One.
And who voted aye?
Aye. No, I didn't vote, I didn't vote aye, I didn't vote nothing.
I know, well, I'm waiting, Mr. Chairman.
Also, you-
Any nays?
Opposed?
I didn't vote aye.
Any abstaining?
There's only three of us in the room, I don't know who you're looking at, everybody said aye.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
So for Mary's purpose, for Mary's purposes, that's in a request in the November seventh, two thousand eighteen letter from North Brown.
Yes. And I'll make a motion to approve a waiver, and approve the certificate.
There, you're all done. By approving that first one, you gave them those three.
Okay.
Do you need action on the, oh, they already did. Can I update you on a few things?
Oh, cool.
Okay. StanTech's proceeding with the design, as you may recall, we authorized the design portion, Task One of the agreement, they just were approved for up to a thousand dollars of work in Task Two, which is construction monitoring, so-
They moved the, moved it though, right?
We, that was, that was an amendment number one to the original contract for seven hundred and seventy-five dollars-
Right.
Which changed the location of the sister, minor location, so, so they're good with that. We had some back and forth with some topography issues that took a while to get, and so I think with this most recent authorization, they can wrap things up and get things out to bid for them.
We've already ordered the tech.
Okay. The, a timeline on that would be appreciated.
As soon as we get one on delivery, we don't have that, because we just picked up the check.
Okay. And other items, Neil's been very responsive in providing scheduling and upcoming and responses, so I appreciate that. We have gotten a number of complaints, as you know, with regard to the rain gardens from both residents and potential buyers, I guess, and so I tried sharing information with them about low-impact developments. I did let them know of your meeting tonight, I'm encouraged to see that they didn't come, so maybe they read up the literature and, you know, became familiar, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I was encouraged, talking to Tim, that, you know, that there are future issues that we need to, they're not finished.
Yeah, technically, they're not pleasing at all.
So they're not, so that tells me that they're actually not working as well as, or as anticipated for when-
They're functioning, they're just, they're just not-
I think they're not expected or anticipated by the people living out there is what the issue is. They're functioning as designed. The engineer did, and Tim, did a bunch of soil testing out there and measured permeability of the soils for these specific ponds during the design phase, so they intentionally designed them this way.
Yeah.
And it is what is the current flavor from the regulatory agencies as to what's being promoted, so it is what it is.
Yeah.
So education, I think, is important for the people out there, so they know what they're, what's going on with this, and they don't think it's a mistake.
I think once the plant is stabilized, they'll work better.
It's gonna work totally different. Well, I mean, it's gonna, the roots of those plants are gonna go-
Absolutely, they will help.
Into the ground, and, I mean, it's a natural drainage area.
Well, and the plants drink the water, they take a lot of it up too.
Good.
And really, that's it, so, you know, I see an improvement with the communication and the back and forth and the responsiveness.
He told you it was getting better.
We're trying.
Yeah, I know you've spent a lot of your, your time, the town is paying our engineer to watch over this project.
We've paid lots of engineers.
Sure you are, and so is the town, so it's not, it's not an inexpensive venture for the town itself, so we're contributing.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
See you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we do these minutes?
I suppose.
Do you have minutes?
I don't even have any.
We've got three months.
She did the minutes.
No, no, no.
I didn't get any. I only had two papers in my drawer.
What do you have, we were emailed.
Were they emailed?
Yeah.
I didn't copy them, I didn't.
Okay. July, August, and September?
Well, yeah, and, all right.
We'll hold off till October, next meeting.
Yeah. I do have a correction on September that I'm not gonna be able to fix until we, look at a meeting.
Looking for minutes? Check the show, see, it hasn't been around in a while.
Even a blind squirrel finds one. There we go. John, he might have some, oh, and he's got friggin' maps.
I read over this one, seems to be okay. I'll move it, oh, here it is, suggested that the board issue five additional occupancy permits to allow them to work, time to work through this issue. Seven have already been issued, although six, the numbers. I'll, July eleventh meeting minutes look good to me, I'll move that we approve them as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the minutes of July eleventh as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move to approve the August eighth minutes as written.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the minutes of August eighth as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Ready?
And the September twelfth minutes, up here on page three, up at the top, second paragraph, Mr. Bombara made a motion to close the public hearing for case number, Mr. Bombara seconded the motion. So I don't think he could've done both.
He was really aggressive.
Yeah, that's true.
Now we have to watch the tape, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to watch the tape on that.
We'll have to hold that and come back from it.
So we'll hold.
We catch here, because I came here at five after six to read them, I read them all, but I didn't catch that.
It just popped, somehow, sometimes when you're looking at stuff like that, it just pops. Okay, so hold till December, something, December twelfth.
Next meeting. Oh, there was one other thing.
Oh.
Sorry.
Here comes a surprise.
Can everybody get a copy of the dates for the meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I can get one.
Okay. There's only three out of five, but I don't see why we can't do it, so.
Make a motion to accept the calendar.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to approve the meeting dates for two thousand nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mrs. Holmes to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meetings adjourned at eight forty.